Be able to put in for the grant money for this year.
So technically, all of the township would be a temporary recipient?
It would, could potentially be a temporary recipient, it could be a permanent if we wanted to discuss a park district in the future. I know there was a couple nonprofits I spoke with, could even go to Sportsman's Club, but it could be something that we can have access to the public for our community.
We have that much town and stuff?
Yeah, a year and a half basically to, and it could be on that. I know I talked with Jacob, once that property is transferred, you're not required to do anything to it. The mission statement for that is conservation. Property consent, we could go through O D and R L for grants for pavilions. I know, uh, Pelby Lake with Youngstown, they got, uh, I think one point two million dollars for bike pass, all kinds of stuff, to help bring some assets into the community and stuff like that.
Is this your funding source?
Yeah, great question. So, um, so we don't have any funding in hand yet, right? This whole process to get the grants, right? We need, as Jason said, we need a name to put on that application to receive that, those funds, own the property at the end of the day. And the reason behind that is we have a Clean Ohio Conservation Fund grant opportunity coming up next month. So we really are actually even behind the people here a little bit as far as grant recipients goes. Um, you know, obviously we've been in talks with, uh, Humber Township, we've, we've been in talks with Toma County Metro Parks. We obviously wanted to leave the guys in, we're just looking for somebody to get on that application. With Clean Ohio, if we're awarded the funding, the biggest thing is that it has to go to, the property has to go to either a park district or a village or municipality. That's who has to own that property at the end of the day. Now, what that looks like as far as a transfer after the fact, you'll have to work through a power called Works Commission that manages that fund. Um, but as long as that conservation use make is maintained by the village, municipality, or park district, um, generally speaking, they're going to be okay with some sort of transfer. But for now, we're looking for somebody to put their name on that application and say, hey, we're going to go forward with that. And that of course involves passing a resolution to apply, um, working through a certification of funds process or just resolution document. Uh, so there are some things that need to pass in order to even apply to this funding source. And with the deadline coming up in September, that's why we're here trying to, trying to figure out.
So you just want, what regards financial, it should be zero.
There would be zero financial obligation, um, and our job as the link of uncertainty is to raise the funding to purchase this property. So that the long-term owner of this property, as far as the acquisition goes, is, it's, it is no charge to the, to the person that's going to take that on.
A couple of questions. One is please, the landowners that have bought this, how much of this is public land? How much is private?
So this is all privately owned property?
So it's owned by these landowners?
So this is owned by Culver Land Partners, um, all one landowner? Yep, and so all that you see in red on that map outlined in red there, that's all owned by Culver, Culver Land Partners. So just one private landowner owns the entirety of that, of those parcels.
So those homeowners that have bought the lake?
Correct.
So as you look down there, if you actually took that to the, uh, basically the dam in the spillway, the total was three hundred fifty six acres. Now granted, we have the water on our side, if you guys actually have the bulk of the property, like I said, I wouldn't want to do anything anyway because it's, it's your district as well, whether, like I said, I don't, I don't care who ends up with it, I just think it's an asset and I wanted to work with everybody to kind of try to find a way to save it.
Yeah, the concern I have, and to be quite honest, I, I'd like to, that's just my opinion. I know you've indicated before, you had discussions that, that township would not accept any liabilities here. Because anytime you have a dam.
If you don't have that, this wouldn't be a part of that process.
So, okay, but what if the dam fails, then that is going to affect?
It's part of the dam, you're not, you're not the dam owner. But it would, the lake would cease to exist in the absence. You would have, you would, you wouldn't have the lake body there, it would revert to basically one, just like before the dam, which is, which is a new little Yankee rock.
So I've been personally going down with a, a couple of residents on, on the lake and stuff like that, and actually turning about how we get those. Right now, the state wants it to be about seventy feet below, or a pool. So that's why for a lot of people, it looks like it's partially drained right now and everything is going, it's drained. Now, that's a requirement, and that was what we had to do to basically get the two-year extension. Uh, the dam was actually supposed to be removed last year, uh, now we're back out in twenty twenty-six. I did put in for some FEMA funds personally, uh, through O D and R already too, to potentially get some initial funding for some studies for the dam. So there is some store going on with that, but it's not going to involve the dam itself with us. So the repairs that were there in excess of three million? There's no actual numbers readily available, we've never done the study to see what the state will accept. So that is where the three hundred thousand dollars that needs to be applied, because we need that money to look at the hydrologic, hydraulic, and, uh, there's one other study that needs to be done. Because there's potential where it may have to be used spillway. Uh, talking to the engineer for, I'll check, get you guys some information on that too, we want to be honest and honest. They got some initial information, I actually spoke to the state briefly. One of the things that would likely have to be done is all replanted on the dam itself. So right now, they're still across the front from Red Rose, it would have to go completely over the top because the classification of the dam, it would have to handle every, it's four and a half feet of water above the dam wall for thirteen hours. So there's no real price on it, and he was thinking it actually might be able to fall in lower than that, just based off some other reports.
But that would not fall on the township's shoulders?
No.
The, the dam repairs or anything that in regard?
Or almost someone else.
The owner of this property, it could not be subject to any liability as far as the damage?
Two more questions, so thank you for your effort, Chris.
Very, yeah.
So if, kind of way to close the half, what's the future of that?
So that's a good question, uh, I'm not sure, you know, if we're unsuccessful, I'm not sure what the future holds for that property. Um, as far as, you know, I know this seems like, right now seems like the best solution to keep a lake, to keep that lake intact. I imagine, you know, that if this doesn't move forward and there is no way to pay for those repairs, they all have to be breached. Um, as far as the property itself that we're talking about today, it doesn't include the dam, um, not sure. Uh, you know, I don't know how much development could occur on this property, it's pretty wet. Uh, it maybe just serves as recreational property, but I think as Jason said, I think the biggest thing here is trying to make this an asset. Make it publicly accessible, make it so that folks can then go out and engage with this. Whether, quite frankly, whether it's a lake or whether it's a stream, still access to these parcels is, is still a benefit. Um, you know, obviously the lake has a lot of recreational value as itself, but there's some recreational value, even if, even if it loses.
Have you approached Metro?
We have approached Metro Parks, they do have an interest in it.
They own the property adjacent?
Yeah, not maybe adjacent, but yeah, I know they're interested.
The property is located a few years from?
The property in yellow actually, on that map, and, yeah, so we worked with them on that. And we have approached Metro Parks, they are interested, um, if this, if, if either township decides that, that they don't want to own this, uh, Toma County Metro Parks is prepared to step in. Um, but I think we're, we're all trying to say, hey, the townships would like to own this, this is something that you would also comfortable. They're going down that route, purpose driven.
Steps we need to talk.
Yeah, it sounds like we have a time.
Yeah.
Yes, I would not want to make any of that.
No. I give an experience, may, maybe I'm, we've heard too much about dams in the last two years.
More township.
Yeah.
It's probably not the same thing.
I think, I think that's a great point, but there's a lot of more township. I want you to keep in mind, the state of Ohio put out five million dollars to remove that thing. And what would they be willing to potentially do in replacing for doing a smaller repair of it?
I mean, I don't think it's unfeasible to say that we might be able to get a couple million dollars to do those repairs potentially again. Not to mention, there's still FEMA funds available. I think it was seven hundred forty-three million dollars that they put up through FEMA, right now it's been frozen by the, uh, new administration that came in. It was a hundred eighty-three million for distribution, uh, budget coming in, into this year. Uh, it's supposed to happen again this year, so there's going to be some delays on it, on the rollout of that. But there is a lot of money, and the state of Ohio is number two actually in getting those high hazard, uh, dam funds, only behind Kawhi. Which is not this kind of question.
So what is, couple of questions?
What have we done? Nothing yet, we, this came about, we were trying to get an meeting together with you guys, I know a couple of you guys were out. But we wanted to, like I said, firstly, I don't care, uh, upfront, especially, I don't really care at the end of the day. I would much rather see some form of local control because you look at more township, you had a group of people where a community came out and said, we don't want this to happen. And you had somebody from the outside coming to dictate, or dictate to that. And I would hate to see something like that happen to us, like I said, I think it'd be a good, a potential asset, even if the lake ended up having to be removed at the end of the day, I think there's potential for some compensation efforts for replanning, stuff like that. And some things that we could probably do with the property to make it something successful down the road.
But to dance, what you have, we can get to our later look at some of your advice, maybe your documents, you have a proposal, what you have, so we can speak to that.
Yeah, so I could certainly get you as much information as we have, as we know. I can get you kind of the information relating to the process, right? What we need in order for this to be more, whatever the outcome is. Um, and we can certainly get you as much information, I, you know, I would, I really don't want to focus on the dam right now. I know it's a big part, right? The lake is there, it's on the property, but there is hundreds of acres that, that want to. And, and we're really not talking about the dam, we're talking about property. These are two separate dams, you know, the dam will, that will be worked on in the background, but really the important part is the natural land is separate of the dam. So we will, I will get you as much information as I can about the process, and what that takes, and the draft resolution, that would be a draft resolution to apply, and what a certification of funds document might look like. And get you kind of what those Clean Ohio Conservation Fund grant documents, meaning, how to get you those, those documents to look.
I think that, the sooner the better.
Yeah, if you give us like, yeah.
So we can get down where this is like, end of the dam, and so we can work.
Yeah, yeah.
The last question I have is, not making yourself. Sounds crazy, but not. Uh, nearly four years ago, there was some proposal by generating my trysty off that dam, were you involved with that?
I actually talked to somebody, uh, beginning of last year, like, about it briefly. And it's not something, when I found out about the FEMA grants, it actually excluded you from some of that stuff. And there's a grant funding that's not there.
We just talked, this is nearly four years ago. And I wanted potential funding sources in general. Do you have any other anything else about that?
No, just the ones that I actually went and spoke to myself, looking at different options.
Did you hear that?
No, no, actually, I, no, and I know who they, actually I talked to the same person, because actually, uh, I just wanted to. Brother, it is my, uh, my godson's step-grandpa. So I actually, we didn't have a party, and he brought it up to me, and we actually sat down and had a discussion about it.
Of course, my trysty being out of sight.
And the thing was, and this was basically a close deal in two thousand nineteen, Pelby's dam. This is the option, they exclude that because it excludes that liability, so we can still continue to work.
So you can give us the documents together?
You have all of them?
Yes, yeah.
You'll allow them in here and set them up?
Thank you, Jason.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for your time.
All right, we're going to jump up to the board proclamation.
Yes, uh, I think you know, uh, this is board, and our president is Brooklyn, he's at the upper. Back on July twenty-ninth. We did hope to be here this evening, but unfortunately, we're, that's unfortunate. Prepare with me while I read this proclamation, please. We're actually listening for that history of so many youth in Brooklyn Township in many aspects. Whereas in two thousand seventeen, she was in fact, in Brooklyn, Ohio, all day. It's been years since she was born, the youth of Brooklyn. Whereas this board has to provide volunteer service for forty years to Brooklyn League baseball programs as umpire, coach, manager, and league president. As a baseball and basketball official in Ohio, Minnesota, any group of fifteen years. Twelve years he was a gentleman for Brooklyn Band, says he's can't volunteer for fourteen years. Whereas in nineteen eighty-seven and nineteen ninety, the Brooklyn Association recognized Mr. Moore for his nine years of dedication to youth in Brooklyn. Whereas in two thousand five, I salute baseball field number three from Phil Park, his name, Ford Field, was on. Whereas Mr. Moore has many other honors included, nineteen ninety-four, Good Day, on the reef. Nineteen ninety-eight, Warrior Band on the reef. Nineteen ninety-eight, the Wary Club on the reef. Nineteen ninety-nine, the Trustee on the reef. Two thousand, we're for office club outstanding community shareholders, war. In two thousand nine, in the ways to be volunteer service. Now therefore, be the adversary, undersigned, trustee of Brooklyn Township, and honor Mr. Moore's hundredth birthday. Hereby proclaim Tuesday, July twenty-ninth, two thousand thirty-five, and as you're listening, it's four-day Brooklyn Township. Signed by myself, Shannon.
I don't know. I don't know if any of you have been, been in touch with any of you at the time. I remember, I was playing Little League baseball, so probably twelve, thirteen. Uh, we played back in Valley View there, where the office, uh, field was, but, there was a new team that come to the lake, it was Mechamatic, and, uh, I was on the Valley View team. But I remember they had the worst record for four years in a row, but Mr. Moore took the reins. And, uh, he was a coach on that team, that's what I remember, my first experience with them. But I know for, another thing is Logan, up here Logan has a T-shirt, screen print, uh, Jim Logan. Mr. Moore goes up there on days, he sits there and helps in full shirts today. Just a news officer. But Mr. Moore is a, a great man, a great, uh, leader in our community, and did we, did we put the picture on the?
He's on the pitch, he put it up.
Okay. We, we do anyone over a hundred who will put their picture on our, our sign, uh, to commemorate their, their birthday. But what, what a great resident Mr. Moore is, and hopefully continues to be for some time. Appreciate it.
Okay, but then now goes to the number one. Um, I emailed everyone ahead of time, so that you kind of see what they're working on, uh, the workshops last year. You're trying to see if you can get some trade, like a rental agreement down the park to both softball and baseball tournaments. Um, we weren't able to do it as quickly as we thought last year, so this year again, we approached to see if you would like to rent out the park. I kind of did a little bit of research, talked to some, some different softball, baseball groups, kind of got some, compared, compared some pricing from some, um, neighboring communities. Um, it came up with this, the tap, the middle class. So I don't know if anybody has any questions, concerns, comments, but, um, they'd be able to rent the park. Uh, kind of goes by, obviously, dates and make sure they have liability insurance, which years will be used. So we're kind of giving them everything they need to succeed, it has the resolution that we passed. And I think we need to do this anytime somebody's down the park, especially on a large scale, without taking the, the park donations. As a map of the park, so label each of the fields. Um, this would just be for us for rental purposes, to just be utilizing the space. Being used league or baseball, wherever else it's going to, uh, to, to line the fields, to manage the thing in the park, that's the ball of them, that's not the beauty of this. So there would be someone set up though, to, to make sure it's a handy camp, so it would just be left around.
So James, maintenance personnel, you're on, you're on board with this? I mean, if we have to provide, would we be willing to provide, maybe, maybe to somebody, you know, we've done that in the past, where somebody's there during a tournament? Or some preparation prior to, to make sure the field's right?
Yeah, I know, I mean, I know, but we just have to know anything.
Yeah, this one.
Maybe that, uh, I don't know if that's part of this.
They use the wall, they use a lot of extra stuff, so I don't know if that's something.
Yeah, so I do it to the.
That's where she come into.
Yeah, so I tried to get, again, we think it's a public park, we're trying not to gouge it, but I tried to compare some pricing. But I thought, we did five hundred dollars to rent it, this one, this one's our repeat for three days.
That's for May, for, for turn?
Just a chart, yeah, just a flat fee. And then a fifty dollars, kind of like we do, we ran out of spaces here, there's a cleaning fee, there's something that occurs, we trash it back, but it obviously was held. And then it would come back if everything's all clear, it's special, so.
And I appreciate it, I saw that, we passed a resolution, and I think it needed to be more than it was. We passed a resolution, because in the past, there's been baseball tournaments going on in our park. They have children at, at the gate asking for donations for the park. Well, first of all, that's a community park, that, that person that come in and walked their dog that day, shouldn't have to be approached about paying the park in our township park. So we passed a resolution saying that there will be no solicitation funds for any township facility for parking for our park. There, there was an incident where we had a, just had a tournament, and I went to the park, and they weren't right there, but they were a little bit down, and, and, and I feel bad because they're having young children ask for these funds. I, I think we need to expand that resolution in the future, that there will be no soliciting at the gate to enter our park, for any. If they want to go around the fields and ask for donations for their lake, I'm all for that. I don't like that somebody stands at the gate of our park and asks people. It's a public park, we have federal funds that went into that park, that I believe that's crossing the line, it shouldn't be allowed in that. And that shouldn't be a deal breaker, because I know when they had, usually had their, the tournament down there, they probably made a lot of money. They put a lot of work back into our park, they're charging three hundred dollars a tee, received nothing monetary other than services for that.
So if we're a kid, do you make a settlement, does this have to be adopted, or how do we, do we just put it in the taxes?
Do you mean per each one, or just like a policy of whatever, is that going to be a standing?
Like, I would just like, oh, I think if you get the, the lights down to people in the door, maybe we're able to have, I was told, our park is being taxed, and you want to utilize it outside of the judicial clubs that you use.
You should probably adopt that as a policy. I don't know if you want to put it in front of a resolution, that we just adopt the policy and, and how it's written there.
Okay.
Uh, please, and then that way we have something, and then we can all suggest.
Yeah.
Like I said, you can charge more.
Well, we always talked about, you know, putting money down into the park, and there's no, like, funding generated source that really kind of used for, for funds, always from the general funds. So I was hoping this would be a way to start putting some money back into there, so we talked about the things that are operating, so thank you.
And I appreciate my fact that you're willing to craft a few.
Yeah, it would be handy, so they would probably contact her first, and then make sure we have everything situated, because I don't want to hide away.
I don't think you need to be, always.
So, um, I guess, I'd like to make the motion to adopt a policy for trying to rent it down the township park.
So that goes to the, to the, and?
That's hard to, uh, question a lot, trying to rent it.
I was like, could, could, could we also get that printed and?
Oh, yeah, well, I, I don't mind it.
Yeah, I'd like to see it, I have a, I have a.
Yeah, and I change the topic. Thank you. Go, go, Mr. Soles.
Yes.
Mr. Ferrer.
Yes.
Mrs. Kennedy, yes. Okay, last one is, I brought this up, someone contacted me asking, oh, needless, so I did my due diligence prior to leaving, and, in Texas, when I do on the football team, the coach of the football team, and they said it would be, if they made playoffs, that would probably be the first or second round.
Oh, so the regular season's over prior to that? So what do you want to do, like just do it on Thursday or the Thursday?
We could wait.
When, when we make?
Yeah, because I want to see everybody else, I guess, to be doing.
We, we got three.
I was just, I figured that would be easy, because it's October thirty-first, we never considered football.
Yeah, okay.
After that, and I want to be, I want to be like myself. Okay, sorry, we're going to now open it up to all the comments, thank you all for waiting, we're going to have new comments. Hello? So I don't know, if you were here before, to come up to the podium?
Can you come up to the podium?
Yep, go ahead, first, make sure you go up to the podium.
Just introduce yourself, please, first. Uh, my first question is, so, seeing your band's not going to be operating through the office. But we don't know that yet, are we, we're going to be in the process of possibly hiring somebody?
Yeah, I knew that was.
Yeah, so we're going to play it by your, right?
Yeah, we're going to try to meet.
Okay, okay. We do appreciate you. It depends on what your second question is.
Not related to that, no. If you need to know about my background, I'm a retired technical engineer. Yeah, since I've been living here for twelve years, the Culver Dan's, uh, of interest to me, and Joe keeps me informed, in his paper about what's going on, you know, and it's very interesting. Uh, in my career, we did a lot of levee designs in Louisiana, okay? Which is like, relatively small, and they're fur. And so I was registered in Mississippi and Alabama, in Louisiana. And so in two thousand four, there was a dam failure, urgent dam failure, in Mississippi, in a disaster, about fifty foot high dam. And, uh, so we were asked by the Danish partners down the stream from the dam, to, uh, serve as professional engineers regarding the failure, and tried to miss some money for them. So, uh, and this, this was a dam that was clean, I mean, it's super flat, the high burden dam. You know, there was problems when it constructed, and apparently we were involved in that, but, when, when I, uh, saw the Culver Dam, the all the trees and everything, all that, all that is avenues for water, gets rid of some rods, whatever, you guys, all right, problems. And the only thing I could visualize, that, that, that that thing being usable, would be to really literally tear it all out. And, uh, obviously, there's, there's a problem where the agencies wouldn't be saying, hey, there could be a problem here. So it's very interesting. I know this, this other part is really not part of the dam, but I, 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 I think that, I would be very surprised if they don't have to tear that, and the cost to, you know, first of all, the engineering study, the actual cost to do the, the rebuilding, big numbers, I don't know.
Thank you, thank you, I'd be glad to tell you more what you have to do.
Very long length, um, I have two questions, I'd like to ask. Between Second Street and Third Street, the dam, they, uh, they did a lot of construction down there, the new fire, new fire hydrant, whatnot. Anyway, when they did that, they had to drop, because in between there, there's an awful lot of federal work, or range, parts are coming from, we're all G T X, you have to explore over, it's in the light, it's seven or eight, right? Is there a possibility, maybe, I don't know if there's a patch or, uh, it's, it's basically.
What exactly are the areas you're over, right?
It's on, it's on, I guess, from the first, old eighty-two, like I said, you come off, what, eighty-two?
Really?
In between Third Street and Second Street.
Oh, what, eighty-two again, what, eighty-two is now?
New eighty.
Yeah. You buy a new?
You go off of New eighty-two, you get on, what, the Standard Avenue?
Yes.
Okay, that's on Stan's Avenue. It's in between Third Street and Second Street, you're going to decide with the river trap. There's quite a bit, kind of, of an accident, and, and something like that, but I'm looking at it in the winter, it's going to be like, ah.
Is it more pronounced style than it, than it works?
The only thing, the only thing I would say, maybe, maybe they would hurt, because they're tired of the road. That's a rated, right, maybe just need to break off.
Is that part of that ledge changing that says, uh, the east side? Yeah, exactly, because we talked about, the county possibly digging that out.
Uh, well, they had that, if you remember that. There's a storm crank something through, like, uh, the, 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 correct, it's on the road, and that, I know that storm.
Well, it's, it's not necessarily, it's, you know, it's, it's, like I said, it's, maybe twenty-third, second.
Well, you own that property also with the second, yes.
Correct, yeah, we're the, we're the digits, it's on the, yeah, right there, you see, one, the, the, yeah. When the, when the first rubber ran, real good, take a figure five, that one. When the first number ran, real good, take a figure five, that one. Second question, uh, the sidewalks on Second Street, if they're terrible and who's responsible if somebody falls, even though it's right away?
I found that out when we did the reconstruction because we were, when we did the revitalization of that neighborhood, we were trying to get Second Street also because it had existing sidewalks. The monies weren't available to extend that for them, but we were told that because we had a resident that wanted to take one of the sidewalks out.
Yeah.
Replace. Well, the catch 22 is, Jamie, I think they really can't, but if something happens, it's the property owner. Once they were put in, it becomes the responsibility of the property. If somebody fell on that sidewalk, I know it doesn't seem, I mean, I did the research and I was like, well, okay, if it falls on the sidewalk, now it's a property owner.
Yes. But property owner can't fix it. There's no property owner.
They can fix it, they have to replace it, it's king.
I think the one you're talking about, he was going to take it out.
He took it out. He took one of those across the street. Yeah. They, they, they couldn't repair it, but you see, you've got so many different.
Yeah.
Yeah. So if you repaired it in front of your house.
I don't have that.
Yeah, but I know this was on that floor, but then, then it says, you know, the next house up is going to be problems.
Right. It's shitty crap because my phone went inside the street, 30 minutes, give me order my house, I don't know. It's getting bad, it's my local operator, um, walk on the outside of the street, problem. Over the hill. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Longley.
Let's pull this case and go back to the bottom.
Another coach.
Ex-coach. Eric Henderson, my name, I want to ask you a few questions. If you heard anything from those wells off Route 7.
This side of Route 7? Because we have on both sides, north or south, north.
The trailer. North, by the trailer.
Nothing new that we.
They have shot for anything? Don't get hard. I can't get through to them.
Here's the thing, if they have anything to, I don't believe so, but if they have existing permits, because I found that out on the other one, on the boat, they can, they can utilize the permits. I guess not.
They dumped into that number four well yesterday.
Is that right?
What do you think? The tank went back to the tractor and straighten the tank. Back, I, I got no, I follow. I went up to the trailer park, I turned around, we went through the gate, got out of the truck, closed the gate and went on back.
So do you believe they're dumping tracking?
I believe they are, they're something, I would ask you to check it.
Did you say you're getting nothing from the water yard?
No. Now, they were running track around record back there, they stopped it for some reason. I don't know why they stopped. That's something.
Ohio Edison's fault. Uh, I'm just sorry to state this, I would try to get a little bit more.
I'm not proud of it, they dumped it, but I seen the tractor pretty good, closed the gate behind it, it was back there for quite a while. And what I did was all the trees, you know, the leaves, I couldn't see what they were already up to back there.
I tried to sit around and see what they can find out.
Yeah.
Okay, questions? Appreciate you getting over there, you can.
I know, but you can go ahead, Mr. Henderson, go down.
What's that?
Say, come on down.
Okay. Chuck, this is an honorable word, this is Mark or Dan. Um, about to get personal, but I had a call ask me this morning and I bore discomfort because I got my record through a couple weeks ago and I did this morning that I.
I appreciate that.
Before I tell you numbers.
You're going to tell us numbers in your closet?
No, 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 I'll tell you when I work in pro numbers. I want to tell you that's a stress against, I have a big two-story old house, air conditioning probably ran low this past month and it did because it was tiny, fat degrees out. Uh, the other strike that I got against me is I was one of the lucky, I guess, ones to be under the rate that we weren't supposed to be under.
The economy.
And we were under that tiny rate and, you know, both was not on the job, right? And you were lucky, I know you were the spirit of the most instant, is there a reason why we were under the tiny rate?
Well, it'd be quite a lot, because prior to becoming a trustee, they, the board of trustees put it on the ballot to see if the residents wanted the township to participate in electrical aggregation. So the residents, the majority of them said yes, so that allowed the resident, that trustee said to negotiate their membership on their own. So we, like you said, you were on that program and I'm surprised because the county, you should, if you were to go on your website and says you can't part of our aggregation program if you live in these three communities.
Yeah, I remember that too.
And, you know, third breaks down isn't too much different than ours, they get seven, nine.
Yeah, seven to nine.
Yeah, and we're nine on three.
I think my wife should leave the numbers and go save them for months if you want to send them to us. But my bill last month was $179.36. And I told Shannon this, but anybody had a guess on what my bill was, and I got it, $400.
Oh.
$470.71, almost tripled. So my thought is, you know, I expect you do this, but I want to spirit that, what can you get? I don't want to call the electric company and get what Mr. Henderson just got by not being able to get the whole movie and say, no, it's not worth it. I don't want to call, I, I, I want to go, I want to start bigger than that. So what can we do? I mean, there's nothing out there that triples the cost for one month.
Chuck, what was your, what was the increase in the prices?
Um, yeah, I got it here. You can probably find it faster than I can, Jamie. Sorry about that. My, again, my usage probably.
They usually give you, they give you a lot of those.
What's that?
No, they usually.
Yeah, the graph.
I don't know. I didn't look at usage, but I know I can.
Can I, can I explain to you the way it was explained to me by Dave Thomas, who's our state rep that went to a meeting several months ago? Couple of things happened. First of all, your, you have two supplies, sides of your bill, you have provider side and supplier, so I'm sure you're aware, one's on the left side, one's on the right. Your provider is always going to be Ohio Edison, thus those are the infrastructure, the lines, whatever. So they generate part of your bill and the other part is through aggregation, is the supply side. So the supply side didn't D go up. We were at 0.5975, that's around about six cents. We're now over nine cents per total, whatever, on the supply side. But your bill went up on both sides. It went up on the, on the other side, and this is what was explained to us. The state of Ohio is involved with four states on electric gold production that comes here. Uh, West Virginia's one of them. They closed down several coal-fired plants that they would produce some electricity. So that whole grid had to change, had to be fed from a different direction, number one. Number two, AI. AI is, is what they say, is the demand that, that computers or whatever for AI, it sounds like some, some fake story, but that's generated a high consumption rate. That's why the bill was going up. Now, how do you address that? I mean, who do you go to? And I hate to say, I don't think there's anyone you can do because the state of Ohio, or they told us this was going to go on. The other thing that happened, and we all know what happened with Ohio Edison, and that's why the old speaker of the office is in prison for 20 years. Uh, that was $237 million they built us out of that we never got. They, they're doing a survey on it now. They, they never, they were supposed to give that back to the consumer, the money they stole from us for the bribes, they never did. So this, maybe our state reps, but the state reps are the ones that fed me everything I just told you. Uh, I don't know if there's anything we can do, and they say that there could be, just like, talk, I mean, I've had two complaints lately, the water bill, which is very high too, and your, your office, you, you're probably not as high, and then the electric. They're both going to go up again.
Yeah.
Um, and what can we do? Uh, it, it, it's, it's very aggravating because I don't know if there's anything we can do. What we did with the electrical aggregation side is we only signed a 12-month contract. The first one that Brookfield did was a three-year, and last time we signed on for 15 months. This side at the time only 12 months because our broker told us those rates are so volatile is we want to be able to, because we, within three months, that's the end of the contract. So once we're in it nine months, if there starts to be a move in the pricing, we can grab it right away. Uh, it may go up, may come down. They're hoping it's going to come down, everything levels off, that's why we only signed a 12-month agreement. But as frustrating as it is, unless you guys have any other sources, I don't think there's anything we can do. Yeah, and it's frustrating because I didn't get mine yet, but I, I, you know, my bill, but my wife, we're anticipating this, but I heard everyone from double to tripper, some people tripping. I have a brother that lives in an apartment.
170 times three is 510, but it was 470, so.
Yes, it is tripper.
But the other thing that's confusing to me is my neighbor, they were guys from the apartment, they don't use as much of a test in his meter. She told me there were no one down to us, 49 to 57.
Let me ask one other question. Do you have a smart meter?
I have a lot.
A smart meter, they put a smart meter in your option?
Yeah, I think so, yeah.
All right. Here, here's what they told me because I had a little question. They said they lived in other places and, you know, they look at internet or wherever, but once they got a smart meter, their bill blew up, all right? So I asked that question, is that going to happen? And they said, well, two things, if you have an old meter, which most of us did, it, it wasn't very accurate. So when you get a smart meter, the smart meter's going to, I mean, to, to the minute, it knows what, what you're consuming. But they said, if you put, get the smart meter put in and you see a drastic, which they might not be accounting for this, increase, they will come to make sure it's countable. Here's the other, the other thing is that, and I, somebody else told me this, whether it's true or not, and well, it was, I think it was one of our residents suggested, I don't know if you have things that, like phone chargers plugged in always in your office or something. Uh, if you have things that are, seem to be idle, that they're not, you should unplug them because that is, that is rating, you know, that's drawing even though it's not charging or doing it. Uh, so maybe that's one way that you could start, you know, that's what we, we started to do, since we came back on vacation, start unplugging things that we didn't need and we'll plug them in when we do. I mean, something as easy as, as, you know, a toaster or something, you might have to unplug it here.
I understand that, but I haven't done anything in the past four years that I've lived in Brooklyn that I did do last month, but I don't know. So I didn't put things four years ago.
I know, just looking at ways, they, they raised that price, there's nothing we can do about that, so maybe another, we can, you know, try to, that's what I'm going to do, because I, you know, if everyone's goes going up and it's, like you said, where do you come up with that extra? You're a fixated on a special.
Um, if you, if we decide there's somebody that I could call and get to, just let me know.
Yeah, eight dollars, good, best guy. The state rep, but once again, he's the one who paid us, and he, and he did tell us, this was in Groffley three months ago, he went to one of our township associations and warned us it's going to happen. It's not happening yet, but he said, when it does, your residents are not going to be happy. That's right.
Well, thanks for listening.
Thank you. Sorry to interrupt.
Mr. Ted, go ahead. It's Jason Tedders, since I was here. On one point, the gentleman was, uh, on these smart meters, gentleman was very small in Pennsylvania, where there was a couple that actually sticking phones out of their phone, and they actually sent people out to their home to do the calibration and check it. They were internal people and they actually missed it multiple times. It was an ongoing issue for years and just actually recently had to settle it, but there's a couple other cases like that, I mean, that's me, you mentioned, we'll settle first. So there is some concerns that some of the bills are a little exorbitant beyond what would be normal to, and I just heard about a couple of things where they were actually doing studies at home, going to the power company and saying, here's what our study says, and we have an independent person coming to say, and you're telling me I owe this, this isn't right and the utility companies are actually fighting. My, I just wanted to mention, the gentleman brought up about something subtle over, I don't want you guys to walk away with wrong impression. It wasn't that the state said that there was a major issue with the dam, it's the reclassification of the dam created the problem. So there's a house down on the corner of Chestnut Ridge and Haller Price that's been there since 1987. There's been three to four previous inspections, uh, prior to the one in 2019, they decided that this house was in a position where it created a existential threat to them, basically death or serious injury. So that took it from a class two dam to a class one. Once you went into class two, the class one raised the threshold of what? There were issues with the dam actually having some trees and stuff, one of those of all that they go. Uh, there is siege on the downstream side, which is 100% typical of the urgent dam that side and stuff like that, to the magnitude, that's what some of the services are going to find. Um, also, they did mark, mark that there was a low spot on the dam wall. That low spot was where it actually goes up into the yards. They ran it up into the yards and dropped off. And that's what they're calling the, the, the low spot on the dam wall because the water would be allowed to go around, would actually go back down and the rain would go down. But I just wanted to make sure you guys had at least the information that I found talking with the state attorney general's office or anything else of where the issue actually stemmed from. Was that reclassification from a class two or a class one?
Thank you. Anybody else?
I just wanted to make a quick comment. No complaints, no complaints. I just wanted to. I'm on the, I'm a commissioner for the Trump County Public House Department, and I just wanted to thank you because your, your officers do such a wonderful job, them or sites, because the kids love seeing them come in. Some of your officers are positive tonight, which is really nice. I just wanted to give you a shout out, Tannenbaum Officer Chris, he does, I don't have a problem saying that because I do it from that here, but, but we go there all the time and try to fix it, it's best to do it, but I just want to say how positive I am to say.
Yeah. Um, Mr. Chris, if you want me to introduce your campaign? Sure. Uh, in honor of, uh, this.
Mr. Ward.
Mr. Ward.
Everyone knows him, Mr. Ward.
I'm just saying, um, Mr. Chris, thanks for coming, thanks for everything you've grabbed, it's a speaking of being here, so.
It's a great thing.
To share, so we.
We still have a meeting here, but.
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 Yes, again.
Uh, and if there's nothing else.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, trustee comments? I do every time.
You do?
It's like.
Sorry.
Uh, trustee comments?
Yes, um, I did just, I was going to discuss, believe it or not, Chuck, uh, the raising electric prices and the water prices. Um, if you're, if you're part of the Trump County Water District, I'm, they, they created an advisory board that the commissioners wanted to because of the last price increase. Uh, I'm one of the trustees that spawned the advisory board. I went to a meeting, it's been maybe a month, two months now. Uh, and I will tell you that there are plans to raise the rates again. They raised them quite a bit, uh, I think it was 11,000, 75,000, maybe 3,000. But there are plans to raise it again, and I've been on the board. I asked several questions of the San Antonio engineer that night at our meeting, and you get all the answers I was really looking for, but certain things you got to look for is how many employees they have, uh, what, what their pay rate is, all those things because us as a consumer, we, we got to, we get an increase, that's part of what goes into it. So we can anticipate another increase. What they said in the past is that they get the, Trump County Water does not have its own water source. They get it from several different directions, whether it's MS, only valley, they get it from, uh, warm, they get it from different places. So when they do an increase to commissioners or the county, they're going to pass that on to us as a consumer, and they didn't do that in the past. So you can anticipate that happening, but I, I'm thankful, I'm, I'm able to be on the board at least to have a voice that I want to know if we're going to raise those rates, explain. that a voice that, I want to know if we're gonna raise those rates, explain to me, so I can explain to you why, and what their budget is, or just other things. The other they had, wanted to bring up is, we have another meeting prior, I believe it's September, Ronnie, my big, September twentieth, the, uh, distinction alumni, is that the presentation?
We can, we can, every time it's September, you're reading?
No, the, the actual presentation of.
The actual presentation.
Right.
Yeah. I wanted to make a mention on the break, it was, they, it's September nineteenth, and they're planning, yes, that, nineteenth and twentieth.
Nineteenth and twentieth, so.
The icebreakers on the nineteenth, and.
The, the reason why I'm bringing up is, one of our fellow trustees here, he's, he's a trustee for twenty-four years in Brookfield. He's one of the ones that's claiming to have received the, uh, the report this year, the report into the, uh, alumni. So, uh, I know, I would be here, I'm sure we'll represent the township. Really, uh, I, I like to see, I, one thing about Gary Lee is, everyone knows me as a trustee, this was his statement, this community was his art. He did a great job, and I'm glad he's being recognized. I have a little insight to what his application said. And if you look at the alumni, distinguished alumni, they're, that's quite an impressive team that are on there. A lot of those folks left Brookfield, and they were either charged or didn't.
Brother's daughter, something.
Of course, your, your daughter, of course, you're an attorney, and, uh, they, they, not they don't, they, they moved from Brookfield and really expanded themselves. Gary Lee's decided to stay here, and when he did that, he decided to serve the community and make a difference. And I taught to Gary, this, this really makes me feel like a lesson to trustee. He was telling me going into his last term, you know, he's a religious person, but he reached out, asked, uh, what, what am I supposed to do this time? And it was like he had a project every year that he was a trustee, whether it was, his last one was trying to get water line out of Warner Road, served several different communities, you know, Warner, that's a lot, through other, uh, Liberty, Lhanna, uh, and he, he was tasked with that project, and he tried to get it done, and it didn't, he was kind of, a dumb because it didn't, but Gary always had a, a goal, this for himself, to help Brookfield every year. And, um, sometimes I think he just, I, I don't, I sit here, try to get things done, but, and, and it's, it's a lot doing that, because I don't have a specific project, I think, I have to make Brookfield better, and Gary's, he'd always do that, so. It's a well-deserved award that he's getting, and, um, I'm, I'm glad to say that he's getting it, because he was a Brookfield Township trustee, and he gave back to his community, and stayed here to make sure Brookfield was a better place. I gave my time. You should go.
Really? This, this began on Sunday, I was part of the meeting, the warrior nation, and someone pressed a car show, it's up at the school, um, while food vendors craft, teaching classes, Dan's talking about trying to help the community, this is something to try to give you guys something to do, so please come out, it was, uh, very relevant, and last year, uh, again, it's August tenth, it's from twelve to five. Make it like.
Is that all with us?
Yep. The classes are planned, if you remember, I've heard of them, they're great, they're like in the fifties, like to the eighties. Um, to try some a little different this year, so we give you a crowd. I was born in the eighties. Uh, now, uh, to enjoy your day.
We're trying to, Jerry.
So, I'm trying my forty-way left, uh, which is your turn, you can. I just think you stop with, uh, whether it's.
Big class.
Big class, I can't.
I don't know, I'm sure. I have a brush, so. I'm, I'm, you know, actually, I know way back, I can form, I should, like, Chinese, I know the Chinese was there.